The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer 570 Altman in Downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, August 25th, 2022.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. I believe we have passed the rule of this night for the invitation.
Dear Heavenly Father, recall unto you as Savior believe, Lord, we are thankful for your blessings that are known to us and those that you have done behind the scenes. Thank you so much for the rain that we've had for the last couple of months, the shower almost every week, take care of our homes and the lakes nearby. We thank you so much for that. I pray for your continued blessings upon our city and for your blessings upon the mayor, the city council, and the workers of this city. I pray, Lord, that you give the council wisdom to know the needs of the people of this area and how to address those needs and carry it through. For there's always going to be a difference in points of view, I pray, Lord, that you help everyone here to work together because we have a great common cause to work for for this city. Pray, Lord, that you give them a sense of confidence in what they're doing and the joy in the work that they have. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Mayor Robinson.
Present.
Councilman Blankus.
Here.
Councilman Carson is absent tonight. Councilman Spear.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams-Hartman.
Present.
City clerk Lee.
Here.
City treasurer, HR Director Trax.
Here.
City attorney Kaboon.
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Craig Craft.
Here.
City Fire Chief Stork.
Here.
City engineer Almer.
Here.
City building official Peterson.
Here.
City municipal judge Coster is on by Zoom.
Hello.
And that's all.
Thank you. For public comment, if you're here to comment on, I believe it's New Business B11, we will allow comment on that during the agenda item. You're welcome to comment during public comment, but it is up to you. With that, we will open public comments. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes of the night.
Do I get up now or do I wait? I'm new at this.
You're free to make public comment now. Anybody is able to make public comment. If you're here to comment on item B11, though, if you're one of the neighbors, we'll allow comment during the item if you prefer. It's up to you.
Thank you.
She has nine minutes of comment. You gonna let her talk nine minutes or can she say something now?
She has three minutes now, and she'll have three minutes at the item.
Gail, it's up to you.
Should I start out and then can I? I don't know how to do this.
It's mine.
I would. You have my blessing.
All righty. May I give you this packet for everyone?
If you'll hand it to the clerk.
Oh, okay. I might use the C book where you.
So I care.
Okay. Thank you. Do I start?
Please state your name for the record. You've got your three minutes.
Okay. My name is Gail Robinson, and my husband is Bob Robinson. We live in an apartment complex right next to the subject property that I'm talking about. It's 113 East Dalton Street. I'm sorry. We live at 1116 East Dalton Street. I brought some things with me as well that I wanted you to know about. First, we have a real roach problem at this subject property. I brought two things with me. I want you to see. These are the new tracts that Bob and I have had to put down in our home over this period of time. They collect the roaches in the home. I'd like you to be able to see, all these roaches are dead, so don't panic. I'd like you to be able to see what we're dealing with. These are the roaches. And on some of them, it'll show their babies where they have hatched at two. Do I give this to Jennifer too? Or what? I trust you. We can trust you. Okay. All righty. I just wanted you to see just how bad things are. Okay. The summer of 2021, last year, we started seeing bugs in our home, and we thought it was silverfish. We tried for months and months to get rid of the problem, and it worsened. We sent a picture to our grandson, Ty Robinson, and he works for a pest control company, Pest Friends, in Tucson, Arizona. And he informed us, Grandma, it's not silverfish, it's German cockroaches. The empty station worsened over the following months. Finally, our son Wade and Lynn, who live here in Ely, insisted I call Jess at Apex Control and get professional help. They didn't feel like I was doing enough. So the German cockroach is not indigenous to Ely. In March of this year, I console myself with the problem and got professional help from Apex. He treated my home, the crawl space, and the outside of our home. While in the basement of our home, I detected a damp spot, and I went outside and found a hose was attached to a spigot on the south end of the apartment complex. Ray Reed, the property manager, had attached a hose as he could not shut the water off.
Ms. Robinson, that's your three minutes. If you want to put a pin in that, we'll have you back during the agenda item, if that's okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Is there any other public comments or can this all be done?
Should I get these out with Ray? Okay. I'll take them home.
They'll never notice.
Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 84, you're considering questions for qualification for engineering services or units of base in engineering. The city needs a request for qualification for engineering services. Basin has too many complexes. The city has failed to address drainage of 7th and Avenue G. The improper installation of curb and gutter at 488 Stevens for a second time. Lack of proper ADA access along the new Endo project on Gray Basin as well as East Dalton. Failure to address the one-foot drop on the corner of 7th and Avenue G, my property. The failure, the failure to install a water pit at 753 Gray Basin as well as a sewer connection in front of the properties they did others. The failure to discuss the damage to the water shut-off at 745 Gray Basin and the property reimbursements to the injured party, my brother. Today, two other lines that were taken out that serve my property behind Washington Federal Bank have not been replaced. There's failure in discussing proper ADA access along the West Street project as well as notifying the owners to relocate some of the town poles that block access to sidewalks. The failure to enforce code that requires curb and gutter installation on new construction. Failure to ensure sidewalks are made of concrete required by code. Failure to address the lack of curb and gutter across East Street and Seventh Street to control drainage, to better ADA access on my property on the old school on Seventh Street as well as improper drainage from railroad track over, forcing pedestrians onto the street. Failure to enforce property ADA access along the new curb and gutter installed by Endo between Fourth and Fifteenth Streets on Avenue D, just to name a few. You have some major problems and you've not addressed any. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 86, you're to consider paying 50% of consulting fees to a law firm regarding the white funk story. This need to be denied. Councilmember Alworth and Harper cannot profit representing the city view while representing the railroad views as well. They, as well as you, Mayor, being an employee of a complex. The railroad is 41 and cannot account for its revenues, doesn't operate under the statute of open meeting law, failed to collect approximately 20 years of track rental from S and S Shortline. Now they want to repeat the project that may significantly bring endangered revenues. I remind you, the railroad turned down the offer of $700 a day to cross an access they didn't own. $700, 10 days, seven grand. Chat pot. To date, they haven't addressed the rumor that they were paid for tens of thousands of dollars.
Mr. Chances.
Due to stocks wasting tax credit money. That's probably fair.
That's two three minutes, Mr. Chances. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to item three, mayor discussion for possible action, approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. I'll entertain a motion on it.
Approved.
Motion from Councilman Spear. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, from Councilwoman Williams-Hartman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bearing so ordered. Item four, city department report, fire chief.
I don't have the report.
Any questions for the fire chief? Okay. Thank you. Police keepers in here tonight. Municipal court judge, Judge Coster, is anything you have to add?
No, sir. Nothing to add.
Thank you, Jeff. City attorney.
Here.
City clerk.
Here.
City treasurer. City public court supervisor.
Here.
City wire operator, you have the report. City engineer.
Well, we completed this week that request that you had last week, council meeting about this and Coster's and his potential to build more of that. So I'm going to hear us have that to the execution decisions as soon as we can. I also this week met with the citizens of the Andersons, Ely, who have had some concerns about, this is kind of a long one issue, about storm rain actually custardage property. And so had a conversation, half of the citizens together with what it would take to actually revise it and relocate around outside this property within the right of way. And had some meetings with him this week about that. And Martin, Carl, the crew, those guys out there in the figures, to figure out if the problem actually true locate this storm rain is going to occur there. So he's going to go back and analyze the situation, if he is trying to build a small house downtown in this lot, and so he's going to review what we discover and so make some decisions in the process of that. So that's the conversation right now. The other thing that we're kind of getting with our R and D negotiation beginning, is that you came, I'm starting to look over and review that a little bit more closely as opposed to us. Questions?
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
City building official. Please report. On item five, report to the city council. Councilman Johnson, is there a report to that?
No, it's just, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Spear.
I'm ready.
Councilman Almer.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We received a letter from Virginia Colton from R Plus Energy. When he was here last meeting, Councilman Blankus asked him how many of the pump power projects are in the United States. We sent his map, about 38 or whatever it is. But one thing he failed to mention, and I'll tell you this, Ernie, there is no pump power projects where they're taking groundwater up and out nowhere. They all come from rivers or lakes. So once again, this is another misleading thing. And they're saying pump power, the public needs to know this too. They're going to take groundwater in Stukel Valley, pump it up on top of Peacock, and down back and forth. So be aware of what's being said here. There, yeah, there's a map right there all in place, because they're coming from rivers and lakes, and in some countries are using old mining ponds of water. So I just wondered, do you know that for a fact? And the public here, that's the fact. Thank you.
I'd like copy.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams-Hartman.
No.
Okay. I don't think I have anything recorded this time either. Move on to items, item eight. Items for discussion, possible action only of the Ulysses City Council. We have a consent agenda minutes from July 28 and bills from August 17. I will entertain a motion on a consent agenda or any questions that need to be.
I'd just like to disclose, I'm a pastor member of the fire department, and there are some bills being paid on behalf of the fire department involved here, and I would want on them a good thanks to the community.
I also like to disclose, my spouse is a member of the volunteer fire department. If there are not any other items or questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of minutes in the bills.
I just want to move.
Motion from Councilman Blankus. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, from Councilman Spear. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bearing so ordered. There's still about 4:50 here, so we are going to move on to New Business. And I've been requested to take item seven first, which is Councilman Almer, discussion for possible action, discussion regarding future disposition of community service funds with possible allocations for specific categories.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I put this on here, one of the areas we're looking, distributing some of this money is regards to housing, and I have a gentleman in the audience, Tim, will you come up here, please? He has some information on possible solutions for some of the housing issues we're having in our community. And so instead of me going into detail to me to tell you, I'll just have Tim introduce himself and go real quick what your company could afford.
Hi, I'm Tim Green. I'm a mobile home dealer at the Green LLC. I sell mobile homes, I sell tiny homes, modular homes. Those are some of the tiny homes that I pass around for if you guys were interested in tiny homes in our community. Those tiny homes are not like an RV style, which is, from what I remember, is a legal white pine cabin. But so they're built to HUD code, which is a lot better than RV style. They can be built in the quarter ground roof load, which is required in a white pine cabin. They're about a six-month weight on those. If you guys are wanting, like, say, double wides, I have the opportunity right now to gather about 15 of them. We had somebody willing to pick them up before the end of the year. I think that's about it. Is there any questions for me?
How many exterior is your, you have?
How many?
Get an exterior.
Colors or siding?
Put this in the shade.
You can order them pretty much how you want. If you wanted to change a cement wall siding or a metal siding, you can order them how you want.
They all look pretty similar to this, though.
Those two, yes, they're Champion. Champion, I don't know if you guys remember, but it's a big company that's all across the United States. It's a very well-known company. They do have your warranty on them. The good thing about those is general service person, so they have your warranty, any kind of warranty work. I'm hearing you need to do that, to install them, pretty much anything on those.
And your company was approved for your business on the highway then?
Yes, Marzoni got passed. So we do have an official dealership. I do have one house in the outside, which is sold. If anybody's interested in looking at it, I do have one of them identical to that, but all electric, and then I have another one pretty similar to that, maybe a little bigger.
I have a question. You said something about double wide, you can land on this side, or you have it, you can order two partials for it or what?
So the paper I sent around was just double wides. I do have double, I mean, it's a single wide, that's just a tiny home, sorry. I do have double wides. I have plywood in plywood right now. Fortunately, so many other big developer camps on like 11 or 110 homes or something like that. So right now I have access to 15 of them, like I have before the beginning of the year, that are double wides. They're a lot bigger than that. They're between like 1,400 to, I don't even know, almost 2,000 worth of homes.
Well, I see on a photograph here to have a, I'm not sure, a front culture of any of the, are they peat groves or are they flat?
Are they what? I'm sorry.
Do they have a peat groove or are they flat?
I think they have this slack on, so it is peat. They go become, since it's their HUD code, when they come out, they're built for our standards here in Marjorie County, which is a 40-pound roof load, which most RV styles you can't get are 40-pound roof load. They're just basically like an RV, like a camp trailer. So those, those are a lot better. I can get those in modular or mobile like that. So if we get them in a modular home, I don't know if you guys know the difference between those, they come with access and all that. A modular home comes in basically on a big flat bed, and it has to be put on to a foundation, which converts your property to real property, and then better for tax or anything like that.
Which means people could get a mortgage on it.
They can get a mortgage on it. I also have a finance company. So I have access to financing, things like that. I also spoke with RNA DC, and they're stating that they're willing to help low-income people get their down payments, things like that, to like 10,000. And I think the entire bill was another, more than 75,000, they're willing to help out with that.
Are these only a one-bedroom or can you get it on a two-bedroom or?
I think those are all one-bedroom, but I'm pretty sure we can, we could change them how you want. If we wanted to get rid of the debt and put a bedroom or something, we could build them like that.
Because these are 500, just under 500 square feet finished area?
Yes. So those are the requirements for tiny homes. 500 and more or whatever it is.
How long does that take us from getting to the end of the process to set one of these up?
To setting one of them up, six months right now.
It's from the time you order it, the time it's here.
From the time you order it to the time it's here. And I can, I can have it installed and put it in, except it water and all that.
And then I noticed your second sheet includes shipping, which some other stores, we checked, shipping was real expensive.
Shipping is very expensive.
Or you could like, layer the price, sort of reflects the price there, but without approval, when we started this, this discussion months ago, that was a concern, you needed the hood hole to get, move along a lot quicker.
The good thing too is, I do have a semi, say, if we set up something, if they went to a trailer park in town, and somebody said, oh, I bought land and wanted to move on land or something, depending on the age of the allowance that's in there, I have capabilities of looking. So it's just, whatever you guys want, if you guys are interested in the tiny homes, if you're interested in double wides, I can get, like I said, about 15 double wides here, a lot sooner than those tiny homes that people want. I do have one of them out there. They have, they come with real pole appliances, they're pretty nice home.
Question. So the other issue here on the side of two is that there's been some changes in some of the funding that the council has. Gosh, what are the words I want to put?
Committed.
Committed, thank you. Previously, the hospital has changed directions. We didn't spend as much on advertising and some other things. So we put this on so that the council can kind of look at how we might divide this up and kind of dedicate it and then go back and say, okay, we're going to take this pot of money that we dedicated and do something with Mr. Green or one way or the other. So, you know, jumping a friend along, I'm afraid of fast, but there's in ballpark of about $3,050,000 in the harbor funding left uncommitted if we take out the hospital allocation, the advertising, the $200,000 for firefighter pay, emergency firefighter pay. And was there something else in there that was a little bit? My suggestion to the council is that if we kind of can come up with a loose budget, then we can go back and kind of drill down on where we're going to spend that. My suggestion on that and just a suggestion, but.
Mr. Mayor, can I, just that, Tim, go up and stand up there for? You know, one thing on the housing thing, Tim, thanks for the presentation, is there are lots in this community. One individual owns close to 30 lots, they don't want to sell them to have anything to do with the city. It's unfortunate. We, as a community, have to somehow get these people that have these properties that can be converted into a place to put a nice home on. They, you know, they're sitting there, people are wanting to move into them, but some landowners do not want to sell them. So that's one of the big issues we have, Tim. So hopefully with this idea, as you're getting your business set up, other people go out there and look at it, say, this is nice, it looks good, now you got to find a place and they can go knock on doors. So appreciate you coming in and giving this information, especially about the hood approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have something to do, so like, I do know Rec Brothers is not like cheaper lots. I don't know if there's something he has to work with, and I, on that end, I don't.
I feel like I'm past needing to disclose the fact that I, I'm an employer of Rec Brothers, and Rec Brothers has been working with Mr. Adrian in a bright capacity, looking at projects there, but I don't feel like I'm going to vote on this one way or the other, so.
Thanks, Tim.
So my, that's okay. So my suggestion here is, and like I said, this is just a suggestion, we break this up differently, or whatever the council feels they'd like to go with this, but my suggestion would be that we allocate $2 million of this remaining funding to infrastructure projects, either water, sewer, maybe street. Work with Public Works and the engineer to identify what could fit in with that, what could be most needed. Reallocate the hospital funding to about $50 million for housing, whether that's the city, developing lots to sell to, or to dispose it to a developer, or Mr. Green, or however the council wants to do with that, to kind of take a chunk out of that problem. The fire department has additional equipment needs, whether that's an ambulance or other equipment, if we put another $250,000 towards that, $150,000 towards park cemetery improvements that we've talked about, and then another, the remaining $150,000 towards community programs. I know Councilman Alworth, and I have been talking to some different groups about business assistance programs or possibly scholarship programs for those going to trade schools here in our area or other things like that. I think there's some opportunity there for the council to consider some things, but this is just, this would just be a general outline of, here's how we're going to do that, and we can come back and take those one of the tops of the council. We don't get in the nuts and bolts.
What's the timeframe, if I remember, December 24 committed, 27, six, depending?
Well, and just to be, just to be clear on this, and once again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that we're reporting this, we'll have that reported, and we can spend this any way, in any, any timeframe we need to because of the way that they decided to report it. But she'll have that back definitely.
I'd like to see another line in here. Possible reserve for our general fund.
Sure. How much do you think you'd like to put, put something like that?
We're into the second month of this quarter of this year, and inflation's still going rampant. I'll say 200,000.
Okay.
That's a big cushion, but I'd like to have some money there if something goes haywire, and we need to, because my old problem with all this proposed funding was, I didn't want to use it on budgetary items. I wanted, with my opinion, I wanted to see it used on special projects, but as we go into this, I'm really against using it for budgetary purposes, because we can do better if that's the problem. So that's why I'm just saying, a reserve in one.
We could take 50,000 out of each of those bottom four items and put it in a $200,000 line here, but that's what we can't do.
As we proceed on.
I'm going to interject here because I do think you're then able to gently, something we have to do, and today's rate, 150,000, may not even buy that, so.
Well, and a lot of these, as I was discussing with Councilman Almer, yeah, as I was discussing with. Well, and a lot of these, as I was discussing with Councilman Alworth, yeah, as I was discussing with Councilman Alworth earlier, too, a lot of these could be, they could be doubled up with other current funding. For example, if we put this towards equipment for the Fire Department, we can also double that up.